Citizens comments. We are now at the scheduled time on our agenda for public comments. The Board of Education wishes to hear your thoughts and concerns. All speakers must have signed in with their address and contact information. Individual speakers may speak for up to three minutes while individuals representing groups of people may speak for up to five minutes. Although the Board may ask clarifying questions, please be reminded that the Board cannot respond directly to any questions or comments made this evening. The President shall have the authority to request that the Superintendent ensure that the appropriate staff member follow up with the individual regarding information or concern presented during the public comment.
You have one that came in by email.
This is from Angela Odlum. She sent an email yesterday. At the last meeting, my comment was read into the record during the public comment period. I understand that it is board policy to not address public comments during open session. However, how are we to know if the Board has considered or is considering the public comments, if they are not addressed in open session and no follow-up is conducted? There is nothing more important than the safety of our children. Again, my understanding is that Brentwood School District employs one resource officer for the entire school district. Once the construction at Litzinger and High School is complete, I understand there will be three separate school campuses sharing one resource officer. Are there any plans to hire two additional resource officers or security guards to enable each campus to have its own resource officer or security guard during school hours? If not, why not? If it is not appropriate to address my comment during the meeting, I would greatly appreciate if someone would follow up with me after the meeting. Kate Hastings has my contact information. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
And I can, I can reach out to that community member tomorrow if the Board would like.
Okay. And, and school safety is on our agenda.
Yeah, I have a report about it this evening as well.
Okay. And that's all the comments we have, so could you call the role and then since our Vice President is here, she's de-dep, I think she de-deputized me. You're in charge.
You can, I need, I need a couple of minutes to just kind of, so if you wouldn't mind continuing, then I can.
All right, well, I'll get her, go ahead, call the role.
Jamie Allen, Brian Lynn.
President.
Chris Perkins.
Here.
Keith Ravenberg.
Here.
Keith Slusser.
Here.
Lindsay Spencer. Carrie Johnson.
Here.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. A second.
Any discussion? If you're all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That brings us to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. First off tonight, we have Matt and I with Navigate to give us an update on our construction projects.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Matt.
I believe it's already been a full summer since the last update, but I was here, I think in May, the end of school year, and now we're kicking off the new year. Want to give an opportunity to come give you an update on both the McGrath project and the upcoming Mark Twain rehab project. So, like I said, we'll kickstart with McGrath. I'll give an overall project update. We'll talk, give you an update on the budget. Look at the current schedule for Mark Twain, McGrath Design, and plan for bidding and construction. So first off with McGrath, just a couple bullet points on where we're at with some of the site activities. This will be for exterior and site work. So on the outside of the building, as many of you have probably driven by, we've made a lot of progress with the exterior masonry. Brick veneers nearly complete. We're working right now on the south elevation of the gymnasium. It'll grab and turn that east elevation and then we'll be pretty much complete with all the eastern work by hopefully the end of this month, as long as weather kind of holds out. The shingle roofing is ongoing. They stocked, I think, the gymnasium roof yesterday or day before, so they'll, they'll be back on there tomorrow and putting shingles up. We are under, we're, we're in the dry. This will be just that, that cover, you know, layer of shingles on the top. Architectural sheet metal and EFS work. This is continuing and should be wrapped up the end of this month. So a lot of your downspouts coping covers, any of that metal work. Windows have started being installed this last month. They are working their way around the building, trying to get the rest of it dried in. Some of the storefront areas around the stairwells, it'll take them a little bit more time, but they should also be wrapping that up this month. Big milestones the last few weeks have been all of our utilities to the building are now hot, so our, our big one was the permanent power. Ameren got us permanent service just two weeks ago, so we have power to the building. We'll be starting to run some of the rooftop equipments. We can acclimate the building and get more of the finishes going on the inside. The water is now turned on, flushed, and brought to the building. Our gas utilities, Inspire connected the gas meter last week, so we're, we're hot with all the main utilities. We do have Charter lined up to start with their work and that will more or less tie towards the end of the project so we can get the IT infrastructure going. Site wise, we are going to be starting grading on the north elevation and really the bulk of that parking lot on the north side, so that'll start this week, next week, and start getting some more paving going so that we can have our apartment lot. So just a couple pictures of the outside. So this is that, that main entrance on the northeast corner. So you can see that brickwork on the, you know, that bottom band is, is, is complete all the way around the building, except over to the gymnasium side, which is on the back side of this. The EFS up top, and then you got your split face CMU around that entranceway there. And the guys on the lift are putting in the curtain wall entrance, that aluminum storefront in this picture. Some of the grading that's going to happen will be where you see just the rock there, that's, that's what's going to happen next, is getting a lot of the grading completed and paving going here in the next month or so. This is that courtyard, ran between the two wings, just showing you some of the progress there. Just starting on the roofs. You can see that white is just the underlayment, that's the waterproofing membrane. They'll be putting shingles down and look more like, like a house roof shingle. They'll be installing that. All of our other flat roofs are 100% complete. You can see we have downspouts tied into the underground storm detention, which is kind of hard to believe, but back when we were doing all the early site work, this is the area where there's 60 inch pipes underground that we probably showed you guys right in this courtyard space, so right underneath the site there is where this underground detention basin is located. So, kind of cool to see that. Eventually, probably in another month, we'll have the paving down, which will be the groundwork for the playground. Some of the interior work that's been going on over the summer, we have, like I said, started up our, some of our rooftop equipment, getting the HVAC systems going so that we can climatize that building and get finished painting. A lot of the woodwork, casework started, so that's going to be starting here. There's MEPFB finishes, so this is all your mechanical, electrical trim out. Framing drywall insulation is wrapping up in the administration wing, so that area C, we call it, right where all the administration offices are. So there's just a little bit more drywall work to be completed. Some of the finished painting that continues. We have flooring starting. I think we have a mockup of the stained concrete in another week. Some of the wall tile in the bathrooms has already started. We've already started hanging ceiling grid and a lot of the ECC, and that'll continue over to the elementary side as well. The gymnasium, we've started installing, we're wrapping up the acoustical panels, and then that'll all get painted, and then they'll bring in all the bleachers and the rest of the equipment in the gymnasium. Then we'll continue into hanging wood doors and casework, which should start later this month, probably acclimating that material once it's a little bit of the site. So a lot of, a lot of finishes are, are starting to get underway, which was a big success or two actually getting the permanent power turned on. So that's, that's a big, big milestone this summer. Just some of the photos on the inside, so this is one of the classrooms in the ECC, just to show kind of level of finishes that are starting to happen with the ceilings. We got the grid, grid in there, some of the lights have been installed. We'll start trimming out some of the wall fixtures, and then we'll be putting in flooring here recently. So this is that Claire Story area just over the library quarters, which shows you kind of where we're at, insulation. We have windows installed. They'll be hanging drywall in there. This is probably one of the last areas to get drywall finished, but this will be a kind of a cool shot, you know, once you get, once, once you get this finished up. This is the actual library itself. Still need to get those windows in on that, that west side there. We have some plastic up just so it keeps any weather out. This is the gymnasium, so you can see where we're at with the acoustical panels. They're pretty well wrapped up, probably this week with hanging those acoustical panels. Then the painter will get in there and start painting. And then, once, once we do have the HVC running there, we'll be able to put the wood floor in for that, that basket. This is just a shot of the switch gear, the permanent switch gear, which is now, now hot, which is our, our big milestone just a couple of weeks ago. We can now turn rooftop units. Actually, they've been starting those up. I got a text from Andrew Hartnett, like yesterday he was all excited about having a startup guy on site, you know, getting some of those started up, so he's, he's excited. Some of the project, just overall, updates on completion and just move in. So we are still on target for the end of October for substantial completion. That'll kind of kick off a, you know, partial, you know, move with punch lists. We'll have a probably a month of getting punch list items addressed, you know, final cleaning, you know, that, that sort of thing, so we're at the final completion end in November. I incorporated here some of the other ancillary activities that'll happen after that, you know, final completion, so we do, we will have like a lot of owner training for some of the facility folks, and also the administration folks on all the systems in the building. A lot of the, you know, intercom, PA, security systems as well. Furniture installation, we have scheduled for this first part of January. That'll probably be a two to three week timeframe where the furniture will be installed in the building. I have facilities and security, so that's just, like I said, with acclimating facilities, getting all the security systems, you know, up and running. I think Andy was talking about, you know, having all his key files, he's got a program and that, just that kind of detail. Some of the IT infrastructure, December, January, so we have been in communication working on a move in plan with Sean Parker, the district's IT director, and Andrew Hartnett. So once, you know, we establish a final completion, then Sean can kind of move in, start setting up his, his IT and servers and all his, his stuff, so that we've kind of got that penciled in December, January. Billing, final clean after like furniture is, is installed and punched, we've got that slated in February. Billing internet activated, so I just threw this in there, just talking to Sean, the existing McGrath, I guess it doesn't get shut down until July 1st, so it'll, we'll have a, we'll have the new McGrath and then, and the existing McGrath online for internet. We'll have the server, the servers and everything online sooner than that, but he said it won't be until July before like wifi and internet, but that would be established. That would just allow, you know, staff move the summer of 23 and that whole transition with, with Mark Twain.
Well, and to put in there, that's been, that's been one of our, you know, we, we've had, I know the Board has as well, has had some questions about would there be any possibility of, of moving in perhaps at the semester and that the, the IT piece of that is, is one of the prime considerations. We've had components of, you know, the server and, and working with, with Charter on the, on the internet access, and there is, you know, some concern that we'll definitely have it done by July of 23, but the lead time with all the supply chain issues on the IT infrastructure is multiple months out. So Sean has been working on this already for several months and getting orders in, but they're still showing some indeterminate lead times on some of those, so.
Yeah, I think he was saying on his, his switches which go in the IT racks, those alone are like a nine month lead time, you know, which is a part of supply chain issues and just some of the longer lead stuff that he's, he's having to deal with. But yeah, that's, that's definitely a major component of, you know, your communications within the building.
Well, we have two servers, like the one that's already at McGrath, and then a server for the new McGrath, so that when we bring over Mark Twain, we will be able to support that volume of internet capabilities for McGrath and Mark Twain.
Yeah, we'll have two capabilities for both buildings.
Yeah, and that has been a part of Sean's master plan and talked about how that transition of keeping the old McGrath live, because at first Charter was not aware that it was staying, so we had to keep iterating that, no, this, this is actually staying for another year while we move, you know, other folks over, so we'll have two buildings here live. So that's, that's all a part of this committee.
Any questions for Matt on the, on the timeline before he moves on from that?
I, I still have my Navigate hard hat, so. Yeah. I would, yeah, I'd be more than happy to give you guys a tour. We can set up a, you know, time that works if we want to do it, you know, after hours again like we did the last one, that'd be fine, like if we're to set up.
That sounds great.
Yeah, maybe what, a couple of weeks out or something?
Yeah. That sounds great.
With all the work that's going on down there and the construction and grading, were there any issues with all that heavy rain of any runoff into the neighborhoods?
Yeah, so we did have one of the neighbors on Stratford Lane, three houses in on Stratford. They came on to site to try to talk to the contractor about potential issues they were having with some water getting into the basement. Right now it is into the contractor's insurance to go to the next steps, you know, sees, I mean, it's really unclear. I mean, they're pointing the finger at our job site. There's also an easement that goes right between the job site and those houses, that's kind of the city owned stuff. But as far as, you know, clearly falling, I mean, we, like you said, we had a very, very heavy rain. We had, you know, the good thing is with us starting to put the final grading and all the pavement down in the next month, anything that could be on site is going to be directed towards an area drain that goes underground. I think it was a matter, maybe a culmination of both that and just water coming from uphill and found, found its way unfortunately. But yeah, that was really the only, you know, major impact from the drainage and switching.
And she's, she's working with the insurance for ICS, and Andy Hartnett has reached out to her personally a couple of times, since we always want to try to be good neighbors for these situations and help facilitate that process however it resolves.
We had some issue down there and years ago, I think there was a, was it a storm sewer inlet that was plugged up and somebody got water? I don't remember specifics, but this has come up before. I'd kind of hope that with all the huge range pipes they put in that this would not be an issue. Yeah, like I said, that whole north side, right now we're just a rough grade, so all of our inlets are kind of up about a foot off of the grade, so once we bring up rock and we actually tie pavement into those, that'll help dramatically. So I mean, we're within a month or so of actually tying those in, so any additional runoff would just be, you know, what would potentially be coming down through that easement? There's, there's some telephone holes between there. I think MSD was also contacted because there's a, looks like a sinkhole that would have, could have been an old storm line inlet that was kind of caved in, so I think we were talking to one of the neighbors and they contacted MSD about coming to look at that too.
On their property or on the school's property?
It's, it's in that alleyway between Stratford and the school property. And my understanding is that's the city, you know, own property right there, so, you know, MSD, my, my understanding, there is a sanitary storm line underneath there, which is I think a combination sanitary and storm. Apparently the sinkhole kind of helped the neighbor because a lot of water that was coming down ended up going into there, you know, before it got cut off before it went to their driveway.
Matt, when we had a meeting at Navigate two months ago, there was concern on the wall. You guys were going to be shooting it and coming to see whether or not.
Yeah, so then on the south side, so the, yeah, the south side, the side along Litzinger Road, there's a, there's the existing retaining wall that has all the, you know, painting on it. That wall we've been shooting because there was concern about sidewalk, the sidewalk settling. We shot it for two months. It is, it ended up settling about an inch and a half, quarter total. We had our geotech engineer, you know, take a look at it. He said, it's not totally uncommon, but there's something going on that appears to be some water that's getting under the sidewalk along Litzinger Road, because it's clearly undermining the sidewalk, and that's, it's impacting that, that retaining wall. So we have had conversations with the city. We had Public Works out there two weeks ago, and they were going to look at possibly raising the curb, because that curb is a real shallow curb, so when we had that heavy rain, me and Andy Hartnett were out there in the rain, just kind of observing the runoff, and sure enough, it was overtopping the curb a little bit, going onto the sidewalk, and then of course it's going to find its least path, so it was running down behind the retaining wall. So some of the measures we've taken, besides reaching out to the city, they're looking into what to do with the curb, they're also looking into raising that sidewalk so that it pitches back towards the street instead of, you know, towards the retaining wall. We've also installed some self leveling sealant in that crack along the sidewalk and the retaining wall to help if there is any water that, you know, sheds over the sidewalk, at least goes over the wall and not behind it. So we still, I haven't heard anything from the city since then, but I know they're taking, taking it, you know, to the powers that be, and in the meantime, we're trying to address the waters that does get there.
So we don't think we're going to have to tap into the contend, you know, when we were meeting, we were thinking that was going to be like the last kind of potential major contingency item, so the one and a half inch settling, we don't believe it's going, it's going to cause us to have to dip into that.
Yeah, I mean, where it is right now, if we can, if we can, you know, have some help with the city with the sidewalk, and eventually, maybe it's not by the end of the year, but by next year they raise that curb, which I think they've had issues with people hitting those streetlights, so they kind of would like to raise the curb, so it's not as easy to get to. That'll really help if we can do, have them do that. But I think for now, you know, there's no major concern of it settling, you know, the problem, so.
Thank you.
We're going to continue to monitor, I think we're going to still shoot it every, every month for the next couple of months, just to see if there's any more additional settling. That's, that's where we're, that's where we're at.
Do we have any date or time or any time planned for the staff to go through? Have they seen any of it since?
Oh, like a tour or something? I don't know if, if Andy's taken, I think Andy kind of takes, you know, a few people around, but I mean.
Yeah, we haven't done an official.
But we, you know, we can take.
Just maybe once we get all the, the windows in, you know, maybe that'd be something to do before their PTO meeting or whatever, just so that they feel that they're, you know.
Kind of just seeing the future and how.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, pretty soon we could go, have them go through without all the hard hats and everything, couldn't we?
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's, as long as we're not there.
Active.
During, you know, them banging around and stuff.
Yeah, it's great, I see.
Yeah, we're, we're pretty well in another month, so we'll be just painting and putting the floor down and hanging ceilings a little.
Do we have plans for like a neighborhood open house sometime in the summer or even like that?
We absolutely will. We don't have anything on the calendar, but, but yeah, we'll do the full, you know, ribbon cutting, open house.
People walk through the room.
Absolutely.
I'm back to people that.
Can we have the cleaning after people tear the place up?
Yeah. I think it'll be nice like that.
Make them all take their shoes off before they go in or have a budget for plastic booties on there.
Yeah, so, any, any other questions on kind of move? Looking at the current project, projected costs, you know, to completion, so last, the last time we met in May, just for comparison's sake, the bottom line number there for the projected cost, I think is down $2,500. That does still have a 150 to $200,000 in contingency, just in case we do have, you know, some unforeseen that pop up further than, but that's, that's where we're, where we're still at there. So, you know, still, still labeled to move all, you know, a good amount of that contingency over to the Mark Twain project, and anything that is left over, obviously will also be broken.
Just a quick question, clarifying. The technology piece, is that also including the IT? Is that all the infrastructure costs there?
Yes, yes, exactly. So this is like the switches I was talking about, you know, any kind of wireless access points. Anything that Sean doesn't have on his, you know, overall budget, that's McGrath specific, is kind of covered in this.
And strictly infrastructure, where obviously through the technology budget, we'll also have actual hardware and so forth that, that part exceeds that. That's part of our normal budget.
Yeah, I think like smart.
It is, okay.
Yeah, like smart boards and that kind of thing, I think are outside of.
Okay.
Yeah, but we've already accounted for that.
You did, okay. Okay, great.
So Matt, there's quite a, for the furniture fixtures and equipment, did we just need less furniture, or did we come up with some better ideas for?
Uh, yeah, you know, a big part of that, we, we worked under our furniture budget quite a bit on this, on this project, when we had original staff, it was somewhere between ID and. On this, on this project, we had original staff, it was somewhere between ID and a hundred thousand. Pressure originally, but, yeah, so.
Yeah, the projected cost, I mean, we worked closely with Color Art and, you know, by the timing of what we were able to do, we kind of got in before additional increases because they were predicting an additional, you know, twelve to fifteen percent. But we were able to, to get our orders in prior to that additional, so that was a basically nice savings. But, you know, we got exactly what we wanted to get in terms of the furniture, so. And as always, we were kind of, you know, trying to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money and going through when there are comparable quality furniture, you know, that would perhaps be a lesser price and we were opting for some of that. But we got, everything has, you know, ten plus year warranties, really good stuff.
Any other questions? Uh, so update on Mark Twain. So, we are through RDD, we're, the HCK is currently wrapping up the CDs of the construction documents, which will be the bid documents that go out, targeting the middle of September to have those wrapped up. Then we'll go through a round of constructability reviews, you know, that's something that Navigate does. So, we'll, we'll look at the drawings, you know, just for a, you know, standpoint, if we're going to bid it out, if we've seen any discrepancies, we'll go through that with them. And then the plan is to go out to bid in November with a bid date in early or mid-December, before the holidays, with still maintaining that construction start date of May of the following year, which will more or less be dependent on the timing of move out and abatement, because we will have some abatement. But the plan is still, you know, summer twenty-three to summer twenty-four before the construction is completed.
Are we going to try to maybe head it in to December, like the bid date? I know when we talked earlier about trying to, you know, get it in so we can have a board meeting instead of, you know, if we wait till the end of January to approve the person, it could cost them to wait. I mean, I know we're, we're pushing, we pushed the bid date out in hopes that we could get some more people in. I guess I just want to make sure that if we're going to be voting on something, you know, we can have something in December, for the December meeting. If we have it, it'd be much better to give people six months of lead time instead of five months of lead time to start prepping.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I think we have it set up to, it's like fifteenth, I think, of December or so.
Yeah, I think we worked backwards from the December board meeting.
Okay, yeah, I was just looking at the. Yeah, the twenty, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, it gives us, we get bids in, we can get the, you know, top two, three contractors in, we'll review them, do some background, you know, checks and then come to the board meeting with a recommendation.
Is five days enough time for you guys to do all that or?
Yeah, it's, it's tight, but, you know, we can make it work for sure.
We can always have a special meeting if it's necessary.
A little, a little later in December, a little later in December, twenty-third, twenty-four. Let us know what you need, Matt.
Yeah, and, yeah, and speaking to that, you know, why we pushed it back a couple of months. You know, I think initially we were more in line with this timeline before all the crazy, you know, material and escalations and supply chain. Then we kind of moved it up to September, now we've decided a good strategy would be, hey, let's let inflation come down a little bit. Let, let more GCs come off the summer, you know, really get eager for the backlog of work for two thousand twenty-three. So, if we can maybe make two of the, both of those work in our advantage, I think that'll help with both bidder turnout and, you know, hopefully some cost, you know, savings. That was the reason why we moved it from the September, the number, you know, bid, bid going out to bid. So, you know, that still gives us, like you said, six months before construction actually starts for getting a head start on procurement.
I mean, because the biggest concern obviously is just material, you know, like if we're having this much trouble now getting IT stuff, the last thing I want is for Mark Twain to not be ready. And move into the other building because now, you know, two years on that site and it just, or we're moving them in the middle of the semester, which, I mean, you know, I couldn't even fathom that either. So, I just want to make sure that we're giving everyone as much time, lead time as possible to make sure that they are successful. And that's what you guys are hired for.
To that point, I hope, you have with your level of confidence that we'll get that Mark Twain all done in one year without some huge surprise coming out of some walls or. I mean, it's so refreshing when you report on the crap building because everything's on time, it's on the budget. And that's the only time that's ever happened to us, other than this building, where we got lucky because there was a recession and everybody wanted to bid on it. But what, it's a loaded question.
Yeah, I mean, of course, there could be something, you know, one thing that could refresh you a little bit is just the amount of time that I know HCK has taken scouting that building out. They, I think it was last week or the week before, the structural engineer spent a whole day or half a day just combing through attic spaces and, you know, finding where some of those load bearing walls are or some of the columns, so that we don't have, you know, some of that unforeseen. About a month ago, we had an excavating company come out and expose some of the footings where we're going to have the new addition. Well, just to, just so we knew exactly where the footings were, you know, how we're going to tie in the new building. You know, some of those surprises we don't want to have when we start digging into the ground. So, there has been a, you know, pretty good amount of effort ahead of time. Yeah, we're going to have some surprises along the way. I think we feel that, you know, twelve to thirteen months, you know, is more than enough time to, you know, allow a GC to get in there, scope out. You know, hopefully we can strip it down and try to uncover any of those, you know, loose ends that we might not have found early in the process. That will be the hope is we can identify that early.
You know, where all the asbestos abatement will have to happen.
Yeah, we have, we have a full asbestos survey that's been conducted. Actually, I'm going to be reaching out here in the next month or two to start a RFP process for, for that, to get abatement contractors lined up so that, you know, come May, whenever the school ends, we have them get in there right away. You know, start taking all that stuff out, you know, have a monitoring, you know, monitoring, a monitoring company will be there while we're doing that work. And the kind, the GC will get right in behind that. Yeah, so we have a report that identifies exactly what materials are hot that need to be abated before.
Found all the chimneys in the building?
Yeah, I hope we have. Each skeleton. Tunnels, you know, chimneys.
Thank you.
And that's, any other questions?
Great update.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you. Breaking us good news.
I guess the only other thing is can we post this also on the School District website, your presentation? Yeah, it might be something that.
Especially with, at least the timeframe.
Right, you know.
But, you know, show the budget and just the time.
Yeah, but, but just put the whole presentation on there if you would, or Tony, Matt.
If you'd like it in a, in the other format, I can.
We'll get that on there. All right, thank you, Matt. All right, I have a, I want to update the board and the community on some safety measures that we've been, you can pull that up if you, if you like, Kate. So, as you know, safety is always on our mind in the, in the Brentwood School District. Obviously, the situation that active shooting in Uvalde and near the end of last school year was yet another reminder of why it's so important to always be focused on safety. Thanks, Kate. So, we did take the opportunity, as we always do in the summer, to reflect on a lot of our practices. And we actually, myself personally, along with key staff members, actually conducted safety audits at every building in the district, literally checking every door, outside door, interior doors. Had a whole checklist of items in relation to if there were any work orders needed, any maintenance that needed to be completed over the summer. After those audits, we did develop, you know, a master list and all of those work orders have been completed coming into the school year. We have also, I met actually just yesterday with every staff member in the district for our opening. And part of my presentation was about safety. And the fact that while Brentwood is a very safe school district, we also have to be very smart. We have great procedures and practices that are in protocols that are in place. And we just need to be very vigilant about following them. And I shared my directive and expectation that outside, outside doors will be locked at all times with no exceptions. Interior doors are going to be locked at all times. And that we will follow all our practices and procedures. And as we would always, staff members will be held accountable for following those procedures and protocols. We also will have, every building has a crisis team that has multiple members on it, including people such as our school resource officer, nurses, administrator, teachers. And they do, those plans are all submitted to me on a yearly basis, updated, submitted to me, I review those. And so, I will be doing that. I'm in the process of that. And we'll also be meeting with those teams as well. A few additional pieces, we did see the need for some additional high-quality walkie-talkies. We already have several, but we wanted to further that communication in a, any kind of a crisis type situation. So, we did purchase several for each school and the district in order to give those to key personnel and to have those situated throughout the buildings. One additional thing is, this was actually, I started this, we, this was part of a training that we did a couple of years ago, a recommendation that, you know, you would have magnetic strips on every classroom door. And that what that allows us to do is in a lockdown situation, instead of, you know, fumbling with keys or even dead locks, you simply pull off a strip on the door, the door's already locked, it closes very quickly. So, we did purchase some additional of those so that every door in the district, every interior classroom door will have that on that. I've been distributing those this week. We have blackout shades for all interior classroom side lights, the small windows in the doors. So, in the case of a lockdown procedure, you're able to just pull the strip of Velcro off that. Those go down, you turn off the lights and you can't tell if anyone is in the room. Door alarms, we installed these last year at the middle school, high school. And this summer, we have added them to the elementary schools. And basically, anytime a door that's not, any of the doors besides the main door, the only entrance into the building, if those are ever open from the inside or someone attempts to from the outside, that sets those alarms off and alerts us to a situation. So, it, you know, the main point to that is, you know, we get concerned that kids might let somebody into the building without thinking about it or knowing. They're generally very good about that, but these alarms are just one additional step in that. In the next, we've been working on this all summer and the timeline is within the next three weeks, we will have panic buttons installed at every secretary's desk in all of the main offices. And those are linked right to police dispatch, so similar to what you see in a bank type situation where, you know, because one thing we need to keep in mind, the more likely scenario than the ones that make the news are, could often just be a disgruntled person coming into the building or a situation where, you know, that secretary or administrator doesn't feel safe in that situation. So, that instead of having to engage or obviously pick up a phone and call nine-one-one, which could further exacerbate the situation, they can press the panic button. And then we're also working on signage throughout our buildings that we'll identify by color coding. And what this will allow us to do is in working, this has been conversations with the police and our, our local police and fire department, that while they have, you know, the, the blueprints of our buildings and so forth, obviously in an emergency situation, that can be a very confusing thing to be like, hey, they're, you know, we need you in room two-twenty-one. Trying to tell them where that is. Well, by color coding it, we can say, go to Red Wing and, you know, building B, Red Wing. And they can head right there and we'll, of course, have that all mapped out for them once we have that in place. So, that's a, that's a project we're excited about and we have in place right now. And the other piece that I talked to the staff a lot about yesterday is while outside situations get a lot of the news press, our real advantage as a district is a lot of these situations that they're dealing with are, you know, over ninety percent are current or former students. So, our advantage as a district is the fact that we do personally know every student and we work really hard to get to know them and their family and, you know, identify and help them with other situations. So, that is how I truly think, while I certainly, you know, endorse everything that we've continued to do with these types of hardware improvements and processes and protocols, I think that's really how you keep a school district safe is by working with the emotional health of your students. And I think that's really where we excel, so that's going to continue to be our focus is on supporting the mental health of our students in the district. Any questions about our safety update?
I just have one, just because there have been some changes since last year that communicating this out to students or maybe having an early in this school year intruder drill. Just so our elementary kids know not to open the door, they're going to set off an alarm just for their information. But then also to students in all of our schools to not prop doors open or those sorts of things because that's important to communicate as well.
Yeah, great point. I will reinforce that with our principals to share all this with the students as well.
I just had a question on the magnetic strips. I guess I'm not familiar with them at all. Would it be possible for a kid that's being a little bit rambunctious when the teacher leaves the room to pull the strip down, slam the door shut? And then they're trapped inside the room and, like, how do you undo this magnetic lock on the, you know? I guess I'm just trying to figure out how to, if you can't get in, obviously it's to keep people from getting in. So, is there a way to, like, un, like, how does it work?
Yeah.
Unmagnet, you know?
Basically, all the magnet, all the magnetic strips do is they keep the door from fully being able to lock and close. So, if you pull it off in an emergency or if it's a rambunctious child wanting to do that, it would, the door would lock, but we have master keys. We have literally our keys, you know, open. We have literally our keys, you know, open every classroom door from the inside or the out, so we would be able to very quickly get into that room. It's a good question.
And then, I guess, do the walkie-talkies work across the district? Are there channels on them that if something's happening to Mark Twain, that it instantly goes over the walkie-talkie to the other school, and it's not a phone call, or is it only building-related walkie-talkie? I mean, you said they're high-powered, high, you know, high-cost, I didn't know.
Yeah, they are. They're high-cost, high-power, and they have their own, you know, their own frequency. So, we'll have to test them to see. But previous ones were, we've been able to, we've been able to do from, from the entire district, because we're not spread that far, obviously. So, yeah, we have, and we'll, you know, we'll, we have different channels for different people to talk to each other.
I'm seeing my head. If something's going on at one of the schools, you'd like to quickly relay it, and not have to be a phone call, like, hey, by the way, you know, I hope you could use for that stuff.
We had that, yeah, in case, yeah. Eating that question from the public about, is one resource officer enough? And it seems to me it should be, but what's accepted wisdom now about that in school districts? Do they try to have one in every school, or what else?
I'm not aware of any school that, that has a school resource officer at every single school. Everyone that I network with, which is all St. Louis and St. Charles County, we have a, really, we would have one of the lower pupil SRO ratios, since we have less than 800 students in the district. We're all, you know, the, as you know, the entirety of Brentwood is less, you know, slightly over two miles. So, for us, I, I feel that Officer Figs, and he doesn't really, and I, I think most of the parents would say that they frequently see him around. He makes his way to the early childhood center. I always see him out at the elementarys, so he doesn't, intentionally doesn't have a formal, formal schedule, but he's very visible around the district, so.
Can there, you're probably playing, is there something going to be reported out to the parents and such about these new safety things, and maybe something about that can be mentioned, that we've had this resource officer, and it seems to be staffed well for all these reasons, you know?
Yeah, we can do a, a safety update, but I'll take some key talking points off of this and mention that.
I mean, it's, it's a big deal on everybody's mind, and so I think the more reassurances they get, it's probably good.
I think the panic buttons being added, I think, are a good thing. You know, still right there, you've got, you know, you've got immediate access to the police, you know, those now, so.
And then, how often do police officers besides Officer Figs go through our buildings? Are they familiar, several police officers are familiar with the layout of our buildings, I assume?
Yeah, they've, they've, they've walked our buildings, they, they know the, they know the layouts, they're very, they're great about just coming by, popping in. So, we have a great relation, you know, we have a really great relationship with the Brentwood Police Department.
Can we touch base with them again and just reiterate, school starting, and, you know, can they start doing their little drive-bys in the mornings and in the afternoons at pickup and drop-off? Because that's also a huge thing, when sometimes traffic gets a little bit hectic and parents get a little upset. You know, the more the, the police presence is, is around, I think it kind of lowers the attitudes. So, especially on rainy days, when traffic is really, really bad, and things like that. Just say, hey, just want to reiterate, we love your support last year, would love that again during pickup, drop-off, and weather permitting.
Absolutely. All right, anything else? All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have summer school recap with Lori Regent and Alex Trippam.
Thank you for allowing us to visit with you, and it seems like, gosh, it's been a month and a half since summer school actually got out, so I appreciate you giving us a little bit of time to kind of give a recap. I'm actually going to just go quickly over the middle and high school summer school program, and then Mrs. Regent is really proud of what really has taken the lead over the last couple of years on our elementary summer school program, and I wanted her to share some of the exciting things that happened this year. So, for the middle and high school, for middle school, we, we actually expanded just a little bit. We're making, we're dipping our toes in the water, expanding our middle school program. We, we had our traditional summer school classroom that tends to focus on those reading skills, math skills, and we've incorporated project-based learning, and that's been our, kind of our, our typical summer school classroom at the No School. This year, though, we were actually able to add an additional classroom that focused strictly on STEM. And we were able to get Mr. Abshire, our physics teacher from the high school, he was willing to present just really hands-on, minds-on activities for our kids. They had all different themes each week. I went in there, and they were blowing stuff up and making paper airplanes. And what was cool about it is they not only had fun doing that stuff, but then he has the savvy to kind of make that turn into math formulas and stuff like that. So, it was pretty neat to see us kind of move in that direction at the middle school. And then, at the high school, we, that's been our typical pattern the last several years, we've been using launch primarily as our vehicle for summer programming this year, and that's about on par with what we've had the last couple of years. We had 40 kids, 42 kids enroll, and they took a variety of different coursework, whether it was, you know, classes that we just don't offer, some kids take, they, quite frankly, will take a class in summer to kind of make up for a class that they maybe have done poorly on, so it kind of encompasses all areas of the curriculum. We also were able to have two teachers provide in-person support for kids who needed that, and, and they came in, the kids came in, and the teachers there gave them as much support as they needed. So, it was pretty successful, all in all, at the middle and high school. And our really exciting thing we want to share with you is the elementary summer school, and Lori's going to talk about that, the big, the big one.
Okay. All right, so we have three summer school programs at the elementary level. We have a Jump Start to Kindergarten, which is for incoming kindergarten students. Those are selected from our early childhood program through appearance teachers, and also through the kindergarten screening readiness. And we have people that we like to invite for that. So, that is actually a week longer than the other two camps, just because we'd like to get the little ones, have them a week to go to the big kids' school before the big kids actually come. So, that was a week longer than the other two. The STEAM camp is our completely enrichment-only, these STEAM activities, and it was grades first through sixth grade, incoming first grade through incoming sixth grade, and project-based learning, and it lasted from eighth to 12, and we provided snacks for all of the camps as well. And Camp Learn is our more traditional summer school program, where we give students academic support. We designate an hour for math, and an hour for English language arts. And the teachers really do, work individually, small groups, the students really get what they need. Our SSD, Dr. Hostetler, does an amazing job of supporting our students with SSD staff through both STEAM camp and Learn camp. So, really, our students are getting so many wonderful enrichment and learning experiences through SSD and through our staff as well. This is just a little bit of, so you can see that we are growing, this was last year and this year. Jump Start was a little bit lower this year, but I know we had more families that we offered the program to, but because of childcare or vacation schedules, whatnot, the number was a little bit lower this year. Our STEAM camp was up to almost 100 students. We added another section, another teacher for that, because we did have an increased enrollment. And I'm actually very proud to see that our Camp Learn, that more traditional summer school, also provided a significant amount of students. So, I think that we're reaching those students that need that extra support, we're really providing that for them. So, you can see the numbers there. And then, I just wanted to see, share with you what parents are really happy with this program, along with some of these great, amazing activities that you see. We had almost, we had over 93% of parents, and this was, I had 50 respondents, and I probably had about 85 parents, 85 families, so a really good selector of, for this survey. So, everybody seems very pleased, and you can see, they're building, they're having fun. The, the boys down there, that was part of the thing where they had a bottle rocket, and they had an egg inside of it, and they had to create a parachute mechanism where that egg would not crack, and their egg didn't crack. So, really doing some exciting things. You can see, they had to create a tower that would hold like a can, a two-pound can in one of those things. And again, the parents were satisfied with the STEAM camp and their activities for their children. It can't get much better than 98%. So, we had this year something new, it was a project presentation day. So, our students from STEAM and Learn, because the Learn students also have an hour of STEAM time incorporated into their day. They had a kind of a quasi-science fair, kind of shared a project with the parents on the final day of the camp. So, to me, I am very proud that the Camp Learn children are able to participate in this. And one of the things that Dr. Trippam and I are very intentional about was making sure that our Camp Learn students are doing the same fun things that the STEAM camp students are, so they don't feel that coming to Camp Learn is not fun, it's a chore, but something that they want to do. We made sure recesses weren't the same kind as their peers and things like that. So, we really wanted it to be a cohesive environment for them. And this science fair, we had over 115 adults come, and we had 152 students throughout all three camps. And the Jump Start to Kindergarten didn't perform, have a presentation, because the little flag roll was kind of hard to have, a big project to share. But that is, just goes to show this wonderful support for these programs that we have instilled for these summer programs. We had 20% increase in enrollment from this year to last year. We are almost at max capacity, so I, maybe one more classroom in, but that is it. We are pretty tight, it's almost like a complete elementary school during that. And then, again, just to show you that, our, because we have the targeted enrichment supports with SSD, and really cater for our Camp Learn, that the parents are excited about this too. They're very pleased with the progress and the support that their children received. And again, just very satisfied with that. So, those are some of the things, but the reason why everybody's so satisfied is because our staff is so great. This year, last year at that, we had a great staff, and I was like, oh, we're never going to get this good of a staff. And then, all of a sudden, we got staff members that knocked it out of the park. I had this, one staff member who is a teacher in a different school district during the school year, and she told me, she's like, I am having so much fun, I'm going to tell all my friends we're having so hopefully, we can get some really great people. And the teachers were just saying, this is truly what teaching is meant to be, the kids are excited about learning, we're teaching them fun concepts, and even though the STEAM camp is enrichment, they're still doing math, they're still doing reading. I mean, every time I go in there, they're incorporating those special subjects, they're like sneaking it in, instead of making it more of order. So, that is what I have about that. If you have any questions?
Do we provide transportation, or is transportation provided for this program during the summer, or not?
For students who are in the program, we provide transportation for them.
And then, so, I loved your presentation, I think all of this sounds so exciting. For Camp Learn, those are the students that are invited to participate, so I, I'm just curious of how many students you invited? We have 46 participate. Is that the majority of students that were invited?
We only had, out of the students that were invited, I think we only had four students that didn't come. So, and I work with the classroom teachers to, to kind of let them think about who they would like to have get that extra support. Usually during the spring conferences, when they kind of talk about this. And, and I very, and because, again, because of that integration with the STEAM camp, it feels, I feel like the kids are excited to come, they just have a different teacher thing, right? Just a different teacher for camp, so.
Yeah, and that, I mean, you talked to us last year about that, or maybe leading up into summer camp, you want it to be so inclusive, and everyone feels like they're going to a fun camp.
Right.
Clearly, that seems to be how the students feel and the parents.
Right. I, I feel like the parents feel that, and the kids feel that too, they're excited to come. I know, I, I love it when I get emails from the parents, like, my kids have had a blast this entire time, you, you, so it makes me feel good, but just to know that the kids are engaged and learning and having fun and growing is really something special, so.
That's great.
Lori, my first grader attended Camp Learn and absolutely loved it, so kudos to you and the other teachers.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's great. Very good, very good. Thank you.
Alex, would you turn on the lights? Yeah, I, I think that's a real point of pride for the, for the school district. I don't know of any other district that has 30-something-plus percent of their kids coming to a, to a summer, to a summer program.
Maybe that's a school board conference thing, that presentation, that we could really, you know, we were talking about trying to do something that would get our district name out there and just to toot our horns, and maybe you'd be interested in helping us, you know, try and, you know, show other districts what we're doing.
I don't want other districts to see, you know. This is Regent, I'm feeling like I got her for borrowed time.
It's a good point, though, Gary, I, it is such a, it's very, you know, very unique store district right now.
Thank you for giving up your summer, because I do know that you have several kids, and, you know.
Well, you know, it's, it's fun for me that the kids want to come, and just to see the smiles on their faces, and I, I think it is, plus to 35% of all elementary kids who are attending the summer school, which, you know, we're providing this snack, we're providing this for free for them, so that's a huge draw as well, and it's, I mean, you can't beat it.
The presentation day, there was a ton of parents there, it was packed.
Will you let us know when that is next year? So that we can come and see that?
Yeah, I, I was looking forward to that presentation day.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I, that was, Dr. Lane and Dr. Trippam were came, and.
Did they behave themselves?
We couldn't do any of the experiments.
Breaking the egg.
Yeah. It was hard, so hard. All right, thank you both. Next up, we have our yearly assurance agreement with special school district, but we will, of course, continue to work closely with them. Anything additional, Trevina, to say about that?
Will they personally have it back? She said? First one to have it back. So, we need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the SSD assurance statement for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Second.
Discussion. All of you, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved.
Thank you. Alex, would you speak briefly to the St. Louis Virtual Campus Program, since you've been going to those meetings for a while for us?
So, the, there's been a local effort amongst all the St. Louis County school districts to put together a virtual, what they're calling the Virtual Academy, and it's, it's really an exciting program that will kind of, I hate to say it this way, but it'll be a competitor to Springfield Launch's kind of online platform. And so, this year is the first year that it will be officially up and running, provided that we participate in that, or become a member of that, of that Virtual Academy kind of consortium. This year, it's focused on elementary, elementary only, so if a child wants to, or if a school district feels that, you know, they need to place a child in a virtual setting, it would be another option. We have Launch as an option, and now we would have the Virtual, the St. Louis Virtual Academy. Next school year, not this school year, but the following school year, they'll start introducing more secondary courses, and I think the idea is that it'll be a slow build over time. And the advantage, you know, one advantage you could look at it from versus Launch, is that these are local teachers, Parkway School District. Parkway School District is going to be the fiscal agent, so the teachers that are all presenting this curriculum and material are St. Louis County teachers. They're, um, you know, and we all kind of work together through our curriculum organizations or whatnot, so we're, we're kind of in lockstep. Uh, so we feel a little better about delivering or providing a local, uh, teacher to, um, St. Louis County residents anyway. And then at the high school level, um, again, that's, it's another option for us to use versus Launch. And again, it's, it's local. Uh, there are, they are talking about the elementary piece, I should back up, to being more, um, of a hybrid of synchronous and asynchronous. Uh, it's not really that way right now with Springfield Launch, so kind of feel like this elementary program, although we don't have any children right now in Brentwood, but if we ever had to, if we had to go down that road, may not be a bad option.
It could just be a possibility. I, you know, Alex and I talked about what that situation could be. It might be a student out on a long-term medical situation perhaps, and that could be, you know, that might be another option as a, as a best fit. Um, but by entering into this resolution and agreement, we're not promising that we will partake. It just gives us the possibility, the ability.
So it's, it should be, um, and I sit on their, I don't know what they call it, their governing board or their board of directors and we'll meet once a month just to kind of, and I'll be able to get updates and see kind of where this thing is going. But it's, it's just kind of neat that it's a local, it's a local consortium that's providing good virtual education.
So how many spots would we get if we, by, by joining this?
Right.
How many spots?
I don't know that they quantify that. Um, and as small as we are, chances are, we're not gonna have a problem getting in, um, especially when we start talking about the high school. Those classes can get fairly large. Elementary, I, I don't know their threshold. It's probably about, you know, fifteen students or whatever to a cloud, to a virtual class. I, I think, I, my assumption is that we wouldn't have a problem getting in should we have to go down that road.
So we'll make a motion to approve this and we'll have discussion. That's okay.
I make a motion to approve the resolution of the Brentwood Board of Education Intergovernmental Agreement for the operation of the St. Louis Virtual Campus Program. Second.
Discussion.
I have. Yeah. No.
So what is the tuition cost going to be? Is it more than, has it said that the district will be responsible for the cost? Is it gonna be more than the tuition that we set every year for our district or do we know that yet?
I, boy, I don't know off the top of my head, but I do know it's less than Launch. So that was another, um, contributing factor that the, um, this group really wanted to make sure it was competitive with Launch to the fact that it would be actually less expensive than Launch. Uh, for, the elementary program has a pretty steep price tag because you're providing the entire child's education versus Launch, or in this case, once they're online, it's, um, I'm gonna say like two-hundred-and-fifty or two-hundred-and-seventy dollars a course for a high school student to take a course. Um, my assumption is that the St. Louis Virtual Academy or campus is gonna keep that, that even tighter than that. So it's either gonna be cost neutral or if anything else, it'll be a benefit to a local school districts to participate.
So we don't have to have a teacher rep? So each one of these school districts doesn't provide a teacher rep?
Parkway kind of takes over, over that. They'll actually have a Parkway email address and, um, Parkway, they'll get on their, it's, Parkway's kind of the, not only the fiscal, but kind of just the warehouse for it, for the whole county.
I guess I just, I'm not a hundred percent familiar with Launch, so I guess I just wanna make sure. So let's say Parkway, no kid signed up for first grade and we have some that signed up for first grade and their teachers assigned specifically, like, how does it work with the teacher, you know, getting a, like, do they have like fifteen teachers sitting there waiting to teach virtually and if no one shows up, they're eating the cost for it?
Well, they wanted, I mean, well, yes and no. I mean, they're, they're putting some kind of math behind this. They wanted to, they, they asked all schools over the summer, even in last spring, you know, what is your participation? And at that point, we didn't have any students indicate any interest. But others, there's twenty-two school districts in the county and, um, my, from what I'm hearing is that, yes, they'll have, you know, about fifteen kids that from all over the county that will be in their own class and they're even talking about doing stuff like going on a field trip to the Sculpture Park and doing a bowling event to where they can bring some community in a virtual setting. So point is fifteen kids from all over the county might be in first grade and one teacher will be assigned to that group, even though they, they could live in Ferguson or in Eureka or here in Brentwood. It's, it's kind of a, an interesting concept and that's the whole idea too, is that they're trying to build a little bit of more of a community. In Springfield Launch, you could have a kid that lives in Kirksville or Maryville or Cape Girardeau and it's, it's just not the same as having your own little kind of community that we have maybe the capacity to build here in St. Louis.
I just was more, so there's a, it seems like there's enough desire around the community for them to have a teacher, pay for the teacher and not be lucky to participate, non-participate in schools. So you signed an agreement, we need you to kick, you know, like, we've gone over our budget, you need to kick in.
The price is set, the tuition or whatever you wanna call it, that's a set, that's a...
Once you pick a kid, if no kids go, there's no cost to it.
Correct.
If we were to have a child who was interested in it, but still wanted to come for music or for gym or for something like that, are we going to allow that or is it your Launch or your not Launch? And then like going forward, because this is only elementary, if they start talking about high school, I'd be interested to find out like what is it gonna be like to set up if we do this at secondary level for sports for students?
That gets into the whole MoCap discussion and there is some talk about kind of loosening those restrictions, but right now to participate in any kind of virtual education, a child has to be either enrolled in our district or a public school district in Missouri for the previous six months. Um, so that, that helps make that determination whether a child can participate or not. Um, you know, working that hybrid schedule, we would have to almost take it on a kids by case situation.
And then MSHA sets all the rules for sports, so we just follow whatever guidelines they tell us to in terms of what seat time has to be or doesn't have to be, so.
I mean, I think it's a great program and great concept. I think elementary, we, we all said, you know, they suffered probably the most when it came to having to do virtual schooling. So I mean, there are certain situations where this may be the only option, but, you know, not that I wanna downplay it, but just, you know.
That's what, I don't know that we would, it would, I, I, we couldn't actually think of a circumstance that it actually may apply, but it, it may, something may happen.
Well, the nice thing about it too is there, there are definitely some for-profit virtual companies that are coming into Missouri and they don't necessarily have the quality. Um, and the prices are high and they're very much targeting parents and communities throughout the state since we continue to, you know, relax these rules around enrollment and who has to pay for virtual and so forth. So with programs like Launch and this, you know, we, we can be assured that there's, we're involved, there's going to be same quality to it. There's, there's not price gouging and profiteering taking place, so.
I have one last question. No one else says? Is it just kind of similar to the PEC program? Like, will all of their scores, their grades and everything still go under the Brentwood School District, um, scores? Will they have to come in and take the additional standardized testing? You know, how is that piece?
That is a good question, though. There will be required to take the assessments now whether or not they are, my assumption, and I'll look into it, my assumption is that we would still get their, they're still our students and so we would, um, we would get those test scores under our test reporting. Um, but let me verify that.
And then Alex, so this wouldn't be something we advertise necessarily, it would just be if a student was presented with some circumstance or a parent was perhaps, perhaps moving into the district and they were looking for alternative options besides a classroom setting, we could say we can offer this as a...
That is correct. It's, it, it's just another tool in our virtual toolbox. I mean, MoCap is out there and we have policies that kind of dictate that. This would just be another approved vendor that falls under MoCap.
So I was curious about the, was there eight or nine districts that are signing on to this? Are there ones who didn't want to or was this, was this, uh, Parkway was the motivator behind this or?
Parkway was probably the biggest player only because, um, when we went to these kind of planning meetings, they, it was apparent that they had, uh, the largest percentage of kids doing virtual education for whatever reason. And so they have a lot of these structures already in place, so it made a lot of sense and they were willing to say, well, look, we kind of, kind of already started building the house, so to speak, so if we wanted to just make it a little bigger and have other districts join in, um, that's, that's kind of, that was the impetus for it. Parkway kind of took the lead and other school districts kind of interested in having more of a local virtual product to offer to our, our families.
So is there any requirements from the Brentwood School District to provide, you know, internet access or computers in this?
It's all handled through, it's all handled through Parkway. They'll get a, a child would receive like a, a device from Parkway. It'll be a Parkway, um, they, they don't use Canvas, they use Schoology, so everything, you know, wake time, it almost feels like they're a Parkway student, but they're really not a Parkway student. Uh, so some, some district had to be kind of the gatekeeper.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Alex? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, that's approved. Thanks, Alex.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Norah, we have our budget adjustment.
As part of our June twenty-first meeting, you all gave me the authority through action to provide for budget adjustment number two to our twenty-one, twenty-two budget year. Uh, this was to set our expenditures and, uh, within our budget restrictions. We did not add any dollars to our total budget overall and, um, we did not add any adjustments to our revenues either. If you look at our summary, you'll see that everyone's costs on the recap page is completely zeroed out. So, uh, you can see in the details where we moved those funds from, but we did not actually add any dollars to our budget overall. Uh, this item is not an action item, this is merely a summary and a detailed report of what we performed.
Ask you a few questions?
Sure.
Surprise, surprise. I just, there were some numbers that were kind of vastly different and I just, it caught my eye when I was looking through it. The tuition reimbursement, we had budgeted two-fifty and then budgeted, took it down to nineteen, so we had literally no, very few teachers took us up on the teacher reimbursement option during the year, basically. We, we anticipated a lot, Will, and then not many did.
So throughout the year, we did move some of those funds, a considerable amount of those funds to fund other operations and we did that at the year end. Um, we typically, we have reduced that amount to a much more in line with our historical factors for our twenty-two, twenty-three year.
What is CUS instructional services?
So collaborative school districts, um, there's a big group of codes that were part of the collab. Uh, this is the last year for the collaborative school districts, so there are, this was basically cycling down the program. So there was dollars that were set aside for that program that could have been spent as part of the consortium. We are the consol, we are or were the custodial agent for the collaborative school districts who manage those funds. We take in tuition from the participating school districts and then we spent for that, that program, um, reduced a teacher's assistant this year and then we also spent less that this year because we knew the program was gonna start to start basically shutting down.
And then our food, obviously, I just, Chartwell's, I know we have like a contract of, you know, with them, but we budgeted three-hundred and we ended up at four-seventy-eight. Was that them raising their cost?
So we had to...
Or was that the, just food cost?
Fifteen factors. We had free, we had free lunches, free breakfast for all of our students for the last several years. So last year, uh, we had approximately a seven percent increase overall in the cost of, um, food products as just the consumer price index. We also had an increased participation in the program, so we served more meals and everything cost more.
Always impressed that you can just rattle the stuff off the top of your head.
Sorry.
No, we set this all up beforehand to make him look at this one. Non-joke is he knows all the stuff off the top of his head, so that's why I don't hesitate to ask.
Honestly, sit here and just jot notes down to try to say, okay, what is it that I can try and prepare?
What is Keith gonna ask you?
Yeah, those are big numbers. Same as the numbers. I'm just glad we have a Keith who knows how to ask questions.
These are good questions. Great, thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks, Matt.
All right, the next, uh, item up, I'm looking for action from the board to give us the ability, um, to bid out and pursue an additional vehicle for the district. We've identified the need in, in recent years in terms of specifically shuttling, uh, students to various events and so forth. We, we often deal with, uh, in my conversations with Dr. Ayat and Dr. Johnson, getting students to practices, for instance, we often have to, as you know, in prior years, we've utilized fields throughout, you know, the Brentwood area since we have a very small footprint and, you know, only one field to utilize, so, um, we often have to rely on, you know, our students, you know, driving themselves, walking, catching rides. And then there's also, uh, been the issue that, uh, you know, while Vic provides transportation, um, for, uh, formal games, they do not provide transportation to a lot of the so-called voluntary components of being on a team, such as, you know, summer workouts, which, you know, if any of your, uh, any of your sons or daughters have been involved in sports, you know that while it's voluntary, it's a very big part of getting ready for the season. Um, so that's placed quite a hardship on our Vic families and being able to try to get their students to that, or many of our Vic students just then unfortunately can't participate in that summer preparation. So after, after talking at length with the, between, you know, maintenance and, uh, facilities, working with Dr. Ayat and Dr. Johnson and conversations with, uh, Matt and myself, um, we feel the best option to meet those needs would be a fifteen-person transit van. Um, that would give us the ability, it, uh, we would be able to, um, get various people the ability to drive that because it doesn't require, um, a CDL license in order to do that, like, you know, for instance, a, a bus would, um, will have space to accommodate it, um, and, you know, be easy to work on, limited mileage. We feel we could keep this for a lot of years. Um, Matt, why don't you just kind of briefly talk to the process of how you would spec that out?
So our next steps, if the board takes action to give us the authority to proceed would be to, we go through a process called Missouri State Bid, usually through vehicles. Ford holds that Missouri State Bid option right now, so that's the reason why we bring before you the opportunity to proceed the purchases of like four trucks. So four Transit Connect, the fifteen-person van would be an option for this. So we would go on, we would meet with, um, our local fleet management to build this spec. We would solicit that to local Ford dealers within our region and we would ask for them to competitively bid. We would notify them that we are part of the Missouri State Bid options, so we would try to get, uh, lucrative pricing through that. Right now, the fifty thousand dollars that we're estimating is based upon the MSRP on the Ford website. Um, that price went up compared to last year by about four thousand dollars. Today, I looked at it as the new spec strap today. Um, without any kind of fleet transport or additional fees, it's forty-nine thousand five hundred for a base model. So that is, we're participating with people of that, but we would rather come back with a much more satisfactory number and not ask for more money. Um, but what we could do is, once we get those, um, bids, we would bring the final bid back to our school board and ask for your approval, including a budget adjustment to add those dollars to our budget.
We could have a motion to...
Motion to go out to bid for a fifteen-passenger Ford Transit Connect. Second.
Discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Go first.
Yeah, um, so I'm just curious, is this a for a brand-new vehicle then?
Yes.
And that would be covered under warranty for whatever Ford's warranty is, a hundred thousand miles?
So this would be a new vehicle. This would be a twenty-two. Uh, the, the option for us to build and start the bid process opened yesterday. Um, we would be in somewhat of a compressed timeline, so we would be bidding relatively quickly and trying to bring back the results for our next board meeting. That way we could get in on the production timeline. As many people are aware, everything is in short supply and everybody wants it. So what Ford has done right now is they have a window open for the orders. Whenever they meet their anticipated capacity, they're gonna close them. So our our intention is to get into that window when it's available.
And we don't really have an anticipated timeline necessarily, I mean, probably six months.
We don't have an anticipated delivery date.
Okay, yeah, that was gonna be my next, my next question, what's the lead time then?
That's a, that's a guess at this point. Obviously, as we got deeper into it, we would keep the board updated on that. But we all know with the automotive issues that, and also with these vans, for instance, you know, sometimes this isn't the most, you know, they can make more money if they can sell them to a, you know, someone outside of that process, but we'd like to get in line.
We're currently still pushing for a vehicle that we ordered in February. So we have a truck that was ordered in February. It has not hit the production line yet, but they have not canceled our order yet. New trucks aren't scheduled for orders until October. So right now, we just got into the window for the vans, new truck productions anticipated for October. We're just pushing back.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So I'll just rattle them off and then.
Sure.
Generally speaking, who's going to be driving the van? You know, have we thought about the overall cost to insure the van, extra insurance for, you know, are there gonna be cost savings from not paying for other transportation because we now have some in-house? How do we decide who gets to ride in the 15-passenger van? Because most sporting, most sports teams have more than 15 people on them. So if we're sitting here and saying, hey, we'll drive you guys from the school to practice and back, how do we decide which 15 kids get to hop in? And, you know, I guess that's a kind of, that's my concern, is that not getting the van, but is it going to be enough? You know, for all the kids to be, you know, because it's not gonna be big enough to take kids on field trips. It's not gonna be big enough, you know, it's kind of seemed like a very limited sports use is really what we're talking about on it. And I guess I'm just looking at the overall cost to the district even after we spend the $50,000 to have the proper insurance. And we're gonna have to pay people to drive the bus after hours and things like that that I wanna kind of think about.
Yeah, of course, yeah, a couple of things. One, this would, yes, this is absolutely gonna be a supplement and not to supplant. There would be, you know, there are times right now though where we do rent vans, very similar to this. When we go to, you know, wrestlers, go to state tournaments, for instance, you know, and the coaches drive them down there. So there will be some cost offset, but I'm not pitching this as as revenue neutral. This is not going to save us money. This is going to be an additional service that we could offer our students. Who would be driving it? What we envision is, you know, we could have some, you know, extra duty personnel that were available. Yeah, there would have to be a cost per hour associated with that. I think many of our coaches would be willing to do it. And, you know, we could put a, you know, a small additional cost around that as well. But I think they would be glad to do it. A lot of our, our, we do have several teams at the Brentwood School District though that are 15 students or less that we could utilize when you talk about, you know, you might look at, you know, the girls tennis team, boys tennis team. We've had, you know, field hockey, we've had a variety of different teams that are doing that. No, absolutely, this wouldn't be like, hey, we can take the football team to a, to a game. We're still going to be renting multiple buses as we always have. So this would just be a supplement to what we can currently do.
And I guess a follow-up with what's going on with our capital budget and Mark Twain? I guess what is our plan? Like, you know, we're trying to figure out the the capital budget to make sure that we can afford everything in Mark Twain. Where is this $50,000 coming from, I guess, on our long-term capital budget?
So we're going to include this cost as part of our projections, which we are working on as part of the additional resources that are going for, anticipated to be included in the Mark Twain project. We are, we are expecting those projections to be done by the end of the week and reported to the Finance Committee.
So the board would also, if that's a concern, Keith, you could also wait till the meeting of the, our next meeting of the Finance Facilities Committee, which will have updated projections that include Mark Twain expenses on there.
I mean, I would just assume get the, get the bid and then start worrying about how we're gonna pay for it once we, you know, we have a tight window here, at least this myself. This doesn't commit us to anything, it just burns up Matt's time doing it. And then we figure out from there how we're gonna pay for it.
That's true.
If this is solely a request for proposal, we have policy and we have procedure that says that we can do our own bids. So if this is something that's outside of our budget limitations and we do not get it, we just proceed, then this comes as null.
Couple of things. So one thing, as far as, I think one of the reasons we came to this is, you know, we've had buses not show. There's a huge shortage of bus drivers. There was just something the other day about how several city schools for X amount of time is not even gonna be able to provide buses to some of their children. And we've had situations where we share buses, Dr. or Dr. Ayat, I'm sorry, Dr. Steve. Dr. Ayat is very creative, gets very creative, shares buses, we go back, we go forth. Kids have had to leave instructional time 15 minutes to an hour early because we had to take buses when we could. If we can keep kids in a classroom because we have these vans that could take them, I think that's a huge thing. We've had teachers have to leave early if they're coaching, and so then that's a substitute that comes in. So there's, there's different things that led to this, it's been a discussion for at least three to five years. I'm excited that we're here and we're having this discussion. We also had situations where we've had big children need rides home. And so this could be something that could get them home and so on and so forth. Something I was curious about is back in the day when we had driver's ed, we would look at dealerships, we would look at enterprise and things like that and see if they would be willing to donate. I don't know if that is even something to consider, but we have a lot of parents that work for enterprise in our, in our district. We are a school district that maybe an enterprise would be interested in doing something like that. I don't know if that's something that we can do or if there's something that says we can't. But I think it's something to look into. If we could get one of those entities that would be interested in doing something and helping us get that van and know why we're needing it and so on and so forth, I think it's a door we should try and open as well as, you know, continue to bid, but, I mean, why not?
We can ask, I don't know what the odds are.
Even dealerships too, I mean, some dealerships have done that. Now maybe we get a used one versus a new one, and maybe we need to weigh that pro and con. But maybe we get a used one, but we're trying to figure out, you know, like he said, where are the different monies coming from? And then we look at this, once we're done with Mark Twain, at a, at a new one or something. But I think we should, you know, look at, look at that and just see if anybody buys it.
Last couple, we don't mind asking. In terms of the used overall, the used versus new, we did consider that. We we looked at, you know, we did look at some used online and so forth. But as we all know, the price of used vehicles is ridiculous right now. And then when you look at the way we would take care of it and the relatively low miles and the fact that we can go through, you know, this bidding process through the state, I think we're much better served if we get a, to get a new vehicle.
Yeah, one, just a couple of other things that I thought this could be used for besides sports. Our, our debate robotics teams are pretty small and they go to weekend tournaments. So this would be a great way for us to have control over that transportation. And staff aren't using their own cars if they need to, to get around these kids, so that's another good benefit.
And it'll be safe, it'll be safety inspected by, you know, et cetera, et cetera, so.
We probably brought up a policy on allowable uses and, because I just don't, you know, if it's late at night, just because someone lives in the district, they could, you know, maybe they shouldn't be walking home at nine o'clock at night, you know, like just because you're outside the district. I I just wouldn't want the car to be only, the vehicle to only be for, you know, I'd want the policy to be written out that only certain kids can can use the, you know. If there's a late play practice and someone has the van, you could drop all the kids off at home, it seems like a good use. I just wonder, you know, we'd have some sort of policy in place to dictate driving.
Yeah, we would have to talk about, they have policies out there, we just haven't had to have one. But yes, it talks about, you know, who can drive the vehicle and who has to be in the vehicle, you know, that you're not gonna have one-on-one, et cetera, et cetera, so.
More comments for Dr. Chambers.
Very good.
All right, any more questions for Matt or Dr. Lee? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's approved, thank you, Matt.
That's all I had.
Okay, so that moves us into Board of Education, Missouri Ethics Resolution.
Motion to approve the Missouri Ethics Commission conflict of interest resolution.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
This is something we do annually, it's no major change from last year.
All right, any questions, any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved, and we have one policy to approve.
Yeah, it's just every two years, the financial conflict of interest in the financials.
Motion to approve policy BBFA. Second.
Discussion?
Make sure you get it turned in on time because I literally got fined last year because I thought I had turned it in. So they will fine you if you do not turn it in on time.
Good to know.
It's like $50 or something like that.
Did we fill these out when we were applying? Like, would I, like, am I qualified or do I need to do another one?
Everybody is doing annually, but if you're running for school board, you're doing it when you're running for school board.
So I guess my question is, do I need to redo, should I, do I need to do this one or?
They'll send it to you.
They'll send it to you.
They'll send your lineups and then.
Yeah, I ran, this was, this was the year that I ran, but I still got it. I have to turn it in, like, it's sitting in my things to do right now. So even though I ran, I still got it. So you would have gotten it in the last month.
Last month, yeah.
I don't trust my wife.
Yeah, but the other thing is, if you are on the board, you know, and then April comes and you're not running again or whatever, and so then you're no longer on the way, you still have to file for that previous year.
Does anyone know if there's somewhere online to look? Because I have not gotten anything from there, so.
You can, there's a number you can call, I'll look at it and I'll send it to you.
Yeah.
Because I swore I sent it and they had no recollection, so you might even wanna send a certificate, so you have a receipt.
Okay, well, all in favor for approving policy BBFA?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's approved. That moves us into the MSBA delegate report, any news, Keith?
Uh, nothing.
And then there's the annual conference coming up in November, I believe. And if anyone is interested in going to that, they can let Kate know. She takes care of all of the registration and lodging details for us.
And I need some lodging information for you, I'll let you go.
Okay. Got it, I will, thank you.
I think she already signed me up.
Okay.
Yeah, you're seeing Cameron Bryan's team.
Okay, I will send it to you.
And this is one for November?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they're right now doing some special or early, I saw that.
You get 10 people to go on the district. There's a deal.
Be a little excessive for us.
We could take the van. Not gonna be here till February.
We can tell you, we can tell you yes now.
We can test it.
And if we had to cancel, we could or not?
Yeah, you can cancel, there's a cancellation date that's coming up pretty soon. I think I always have a cancellation date in it.
I want to do it, but I just don't know about college visits right now.
Yeah, I would say if anyone is interested and able to do it, you, they're, they're pretty great. In terms of being able, there are a lot of options for different discussions and presenters, Kansas City's great.
It's good.
And Brian will line up some places to go to dinner.
I'm like a, I'm a Sierra.
Fabulous. Okay. And then Board Committee updates. I don't believe any of our committees have met since our retreat, where we did do some brainstorming on goals for this year. Correct me if I'm wrong or if anyone has any updates. Okay, upcoming events. I guess the only thing, so yes, there is a school safety summit and the conference the first week of November. So those are what Kate needs from us. Otherwise, we have a motion to adjourn.
And motion for adjournment and motion, or motion for adjournment into closed session. Second.
All right, we can have a roll call, please, Kate.
Jamie Allen, Ryan Quinn.
Here.
Chris Parkett.
Yes.
Can you bring them over?
Yes.
Can you slow start it?
Yes.
Listen, Spencer?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone coming?
So they work for lunches.
I think I got it.